It's like we got more than that already and we're just starting.
But it was great. I mean, just being with Allegra in South Bay was wonderful.
Thank goodness it was that good fluffy stuff. Yeah.
We're live, eh?
Good morning. I'd like to call this organizational annual organizational meeting of the Cook County Board to order at eight thirty-one on this Tuesday, January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Happy New Year and please rise and join us to say in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there, morning Molly, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Any additions, changes? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sullivan.
I move to approve the agenda as written.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have a motion. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All is same sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right. First things first, election of board chair. And then, of course, the next item is the vice chair. We've done this numerous different ways in the past. We can kind of do it however we want. Anyone have any, so well, I guess Attorney Hickon, do you have any specific insights into our process? Suggestions or any commissioners have any questions or suggestions?
So I think your bylaws guide you on this issue and I had intended to look at them before our meeting today.
Well, it's a good time for all of us to
Yeah.
to look at it if we want to do, take the time to do that.
Definitely. My computer is just starting.
Okay.
So, but they are on the Intranet if anyone has it in front of them. I think they're on your commissioner page, county commissioner. Civic web. And while we're looking that up, the bylaws say that we renew and approve them, make any changes, the first meeting of February every year. We took it off the agenda for our organizational meeting since it's so long already.
Oh, I just had it and then I, there we go.
April's pulling it up for all of us.
The website has changed.
Well, there's that too.
Do we want to jump right to the that section?
Yeah, please.
So I think it's page seven.
Under E. Officers, the county board at its statutory meeting elects from its members a chair and a vice chair. The chair first opens the floor for nominations, closing nominations only after all are received. Nominations do not require a second. Voting of officers is by ballot, including all nominated candidates on a slate. Each ballot shall be signed by each voting commissioner and collected and tallied by the auditor treasurer. In the first vote where a candidate appears to get a majority of eyes, the chair declares the candidate elected to the office. And I think that's how we did it last time, before we adopted the bylaws. Or I mean, maybe the time before, maybe not last time.
Yeah, we adopted the bylaws.
Before, yeah. Okay. So historically, we have rotated chair on the regular. There has been commissioners in the past that do not want to be in the rotation. I think that's fine. We all have different strengths. And so normally it would go vice chair moving into chair. And I'm very comfortable with that. I see a lot of value there. And oh, you guys are having a race to
Race to get ballots.
Here's the ballots for you.
Thank heavens for three M.
Well, we just need two each, right?
Correct. Thank you.
And where I was rambling was that the reason I like the rotation concept is it's because it's good to have different faces as chair and it's good for as many commissioners, I think, as possible to get that experience if they want and that practice and good for us as a board. Yes, Commissioner Sullivan.
Please pass me a ballot.
Well, yes, I'll pass you these two.
Here you are.
Thank you. Here they come.
Why do you get posted notes and I don't?
I don't know how I got that.
I guess you've been here longer. It's only after five years.
All right, so. So at this point, we open the floor for nominations and we can also, you know, we don't have to be as formal right away. We can talk about, you know, people's thoughts on the rotation, on the process, and if anyone absolutely does not want to be a chair or and/or vice chair or any of that. So anyone have thoughts or do you just want to jump into nominations? Commissioner Sullivan.
Mr. Chair, I like the idea of rotating and I think, given there are three of us that have come on the board recently, it gives all three of us an opportunity for leadership. So I really appreciate that idea and I like the opportunity to have some diversity in the chair position.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. Commissioner Hawkins?
And I recognize that is an important thing and it could be good. I personally, after this last year, I think we're just gelling. And I think we've all kind of found our strengths and I don't think my strength is to be chairperson. I have other strengths and I really appreciate what Commissioner Mills has done this last year, bringing us together. And I think when we all went to AMC and learned what our strengths are, I think we kind of fell into our roles and I'm just really proud of the way we have developed in this last year under the, our current leadership.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Oh, so you're suggesting we don't rotate. Is that where
That's where I was going. Because I always have to have a different opinion.
No, no. I reckon, I no, I'm with you. I'm really happy with where we're at too. I also want to, I also always want to keep rolling, you know, so.
I recognize that can be important, yes.
And it's not cut and dry, the best way, what keep rolling ways and what the best way to keep rolling is. Does keep rolling mean keep the rotation going? Just keep rolling? I mean, keep what we have going on, so that's, that's why I'm happy we're having this conversation, I guess. We had talked, I guess, a little bit about after that, after that personality thing, about our strengths. And I guess this kind of came up a little bit, so.
Chair.
Please, Commissioner Story.
Yes, well, I've seen everything. And it's only for a year, so I would be in favor of rotation. So that's where I am right now.
Yeah. That sounds good to me. Commissioner Swalson, you have any insight, input, thoughts?
I've been very pleased with your leadership style and things and, but I do really, I value the rotational aspect of it because it's a developmental type of thing and it allows the folks in our community to see different folks in different positions as well. And I think that's a better, you know, it's just good for the community as well to be able to see all the different aspects of the people that they have serving them.
A further thought I just had is that the strengths that we bring to the board, all of us as individuals can certainly still be expressed and shared, you know, whichever role we're in. One of the things I was happy to try to do in the role as chair is just to set a welcoming tone and a an inclusive tone, not to say that hasn't been the case in the past, but just, I guess, make it more personable and whatnot and out of the chair role, I can still do my part with that. And so I feel like it would be good to keep the rotation going and I do, I do recognize the identification of strengths and how we've got a good thing and I think we'll still have a good thing as we keep that going. So as long as we keep talking with each other, that's all, that's all that it really, really takes, I think, so. And so on that note, I'm continuing the open nominations here and I would nominate Commissioner Sullivan to be chair. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? And the third time, are there any other nominations? And I'll close the floor for nominations, so. Then we don't actually have to vote if there's no other nominations. Or is that not in the bylaws?
No, I think you still have to vote on the nomination.
Okay. Well, then I will.
And write-ins are not allowed.
That would be subversive.
And then the first that has a majority.
Secret ballot.
Secret.
Are you guys signing it?
Oh, I have to sign it.
That's what it says?
And sign your ballot.
Now we take a break while he actually tallies.
Fifteen or twenty minute break.
First I have to compare the signatures.
Do we need a recount?
It's a unanimous vote.
All right.
Commissioner and Sullivan.
And I will pass the gavel to you, Madam Chair.
All right.
Do you want, should we swap seats?
I don't think we need to do that. We're fine. All right. Well, thank you all for your support. So now we move on to election of our two thousand and twenty-two Cook County Board Vice Chair. Now I'm going to go back to my discussion about, you know, sharing. Leadership is important and Commissioner Hawkins, as mentioned, she's not at this point interested in the leadership piece, so I'm going to rotate down one more chair. And just query, because I'm going to check with everyone, Commissioner Swalson, would you be interested in serving as vice chair?
I will serve in whatever capacity you choose.
Okay. And Commissioner Mills?
I would prefer not to serve as vice chair. I would be willing, but my preference would be not to.
Okay. And Commissioner Story?
I would not be interested at this time.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Commissioner Hawkins, so it's not a definite thing that vice chair moves into chair, but it is an opportunity again to have another perspective and just the organization and whatnot. So I didn't know if you do have, you know.
I understood that, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And I think Commissioner Swalson would be good in vice chair.
Very good. Did you, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Any other discussion? Are there any nominations?
Madam Chair, I would nominate Commissioner Swalson as vice chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Last call for nominations. So hearing or seeing none, we have Commissioner Swalson nominated as our vice chair and now we have to vote.
Commissioner Swalson, are you commonly recognized as Bob?
I am.
That is, that's allowed in election rules.
For those that don't want to try to spell my last name.
Then, Madam Chair, I would then submit the vote is five for Commissioner Swalson. He is elected.
All right. All right.
So smooth. As smooth as I've seen in a long time. Thank you all.
All right. Well, we will move on now to look at the two thousand and twenty-two meeting schedule for the county board. And so this is following in line with what we have done in the past, looking at our second and fourth Tuesday as our board meetings and then a committee of the whole meeting on that third Tuesday. Any discussion? All right. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve the regular schedule for our two thousand and twenty-two year.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Commissioner Swalson supports. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the Cook County Board of Commissioners' schedule for two thousand and twenty-two? Sign the Kate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I think maybe we need to go back to four.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Public comment. So I do not see anyone out in the public, but is there anyone on the line?
There is not.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Story, for pointing that out. So we will move on now to item six, appointment of county commissioners to our boards, committees and commissions. So I spent some time reviewing, as I'm sure all of you did, all of our many responsibilities. And I think due to some of the history of our board, we're a little bit out of alignment with sharing equitably in those responsibilities. There's a total of one hundred and twenty-five committees altogether. And if you do the math, that's an average of twenty-five for each commissioner. Now we know that not all of our committees and commissions meet monthly. Some are on a quarterly basis, some are every six months. Some haven't met at all during the calendar year, so we have to keep that in mind. But about twenty-five is what we would want to have for each of us if we want to kind of equitably divide this up. And so just to kind of model my thinking and how we might make some just minor changes that could really kind of smooth this out is, again, I reviewed all of the committees, all of the assignments and started to think back about why that happened, why we're a little out of sync. And I believe that for Commissioner Story and Commissioner Mills, part of this happened because when Chairman DeShaw was a commissioner and then left, we had a vacancy and people took on extra responsibilities. And then last year, when we had our organizational meeting, Commissioner Swalson hadn't yet joined us. And so still some of those responsibilities kind of continued on into two thousand and twenty-one. So if we can make a couple of changes or corrections, it might help to kind of even things out. So looking at my list, I had a few extra committees beyond that average. And so one of the recommendations I'd like to make is that the Communications, Armor, Tower and nine-one-one committee and the Northeast Minnesota Emergency Communications Board, commonly known as ECB, would go to Commissioner Swalson if he is interested. Based on your volunteer work with the community, it ties in very nicely and also with the fact that you live in Hovland, where we have had issues with nine-one-one and that is something being addressed by these committees. So is, are those committees something you would be interested?
I'm happy to take those committees.
Okay. All right, so I can move those two over. And I already did a couple during the year, which became apparent early on. And then one change, actually Commissioner Swalson and I have talked about because we both go to Firewise every month. And originally I was the primary commissioner to attend. And when Commissioner Swalson came on, I thought, well, this is something that ties in with his firefighting work, his work through the Hovland Fire Department, ambulance driving, et cetera. And I became very aware early on that my constituents wanted me on that Firewise committee. And particularly during the fires last year, I had so much communication and so much interaction with Firewise. And so I would just like to switch with Commissioner Swalson. I'd be the lead, he'd be the alternate. He still goes because of his involvement with.
Yeah, I'm still the representative for the East, or yeah, for the East End. So I would continue to do that. I'm happy to shift into the alternate role if that suits the rest of the folks. Really no change in who's going to attend the meetings.
Right, we'll both be there.
Who's going to be primary and who's going to be alternate, so.
Madam Chair, my only concern is just about compensation. You will both be there, but under our current structure, only one of you would be compensated for being there.
And I'm perfectly happy with that.
Well, and it makes no difference to me.
It's not an issue for me.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
All right. So anyway, that would be a couple less committees for me.
I do have a question, Madam Chair. Are there, are there specific committees that go along with chair or vice chair, just for my knowledge?
The Leadership Committee.
Leadership Committee?
Which meets the Monday before any board meeting.
Okay.
And one other traditionally, Madam Chair, if I might. Is the Emergency Preparedness Committee. And we've had it's been, it's been more frequent for a bit because of COVID, but now it's back down to monthly, I believe. And that is scheduled for the eleventh and so it is at the second Tuesday of every month at two thirty.
Two thirty?
And that's a Zoom meeting. All right.
You said two thirty?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, so that gives me kind of some reflection and a little bit of change to my schedule. Commissioner Story.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I was looking over my schedule. Several things happened a few years ago when Commissioner Mole retired. So the very first one on my list, the aquatic invasive species, was something that I took over at that time. And I'm wondering if Commissioner Salfson would be interested in that.
I'm happy to take that. Invasive species?
It's a Zoom, yeah. That's the water one. There's a land one too.
Oh, okay, this is the water.
The aquatic invasive species. That meets tomorrow, actually. They meet the first Wednesday of the month. Dave has been my alternate. I don't know if he'd want to continue or I'd be the alternate for.
That would be wonderful. I would be very willing to to hand over the alternate to.
Okay. So that's really an important one in our county. Right now we've been Zooming every other month, so it's nothing in person. A very interesting group and especially if you're interested in what's going on with our lakes.
Sure.
And they're a very active group once we get going in the summer. So I would let Amanda know and she'll get a Zoom off to you for tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Commissioner Story. Anything else with any of your assignments or alternate duties?
Oh, Madam Chair, there is, there is a committee that, or a group that I have been meeting with throughout the pandemic that's termed the pandemic economy and it's basically local business leaders and the chamber and and public health meeting and talking about how, what the strategy is for businesses for the pandemic. And so I've been meeting with them for the last, you know, two years. But it has not been on my, on my list. And so I would ask the board is if that's something that we find value in. And I think there still is some value there and it ebbs and flows, I'd say, just with how the pandemic has been going through our, our community. But just wanted to put that on the radar for the board. That has been the first Friday of every month at eleven-thirty. And I was asked to join by, by the group or by the chamber. And I don't know if it was, you know, as vice chair or chair or if it was as just commissioner, so. Didn't know how people thought about that and what we want to do about that going forward, but I thought after two years I should probably bring it up.
I think that's a good point because we all attend different meetings that are not on these lists. Question for Commissioner Swalson, being on the Chamber of Commerce. Have you been approached about this? I know I was not when I was.
No, I have not.
So I wonder if, it seems like it should be the commissioner that's on the chamber.
And I'm very comfortable with that if Commissioner Swalson is comfortable with that.
However you'd like to do it, if you want for the consistency sake, you know, if you understand how, you know, how things have been done to this point, it's up to you. It doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, it's fairly informal and just kind of an open forum for, for businesses with public health and having a commissioner there just to kind of be in that loop, so. I haven't talked with the group about their comfort level or preference or just and sometimes it's even canceled just because there's not enough interest and other times people are banging on the door wanting to meet because something is going on, you know. So that's why I just thought we should talk more about that. But it makes a lot of sense in my mind to have it with the, with the chamber representative or liaison. But again, I'm, it does not conflict with anything else in my, my schedule there, so I could kind of go.
Your choice.
Yeah. Well, for the time being, I Well, for the time being, I would, if the board's comfortable with it, I would like to continue doing that, but then adding it to the list and then maybe further conversations, we'll reapproach Commissioner Salfson and the board if that's, if that's okay.
Absolutely. That makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Mentioning committees that are not on our list, Commissioner Hawkins is the assigned Commissioner for the HRA, and so that should be added to our list. I'm the alternate, but Commissioner Hawkins should be attending and listed.
And added to the list.
Yep.
I agree.
That's a very important one for our community.
Madam Chair, as long as we're on that, on this unlisted committees, at our, at last year's organizational meeting, we had talked about having Commissioners at Visit Cook County meetings. And I think, I still think there's a lot of value there. I have only been able to attend one Visit Cook County meeting, but the trick is, there was, there's also the different tourism associations that make up that Visit Cook County Board. And so there's the West End, there's up the trail, there's in Grand Marais proper. And so those actually meet more frequently versus the kind of accumulation of it. And so I didn't know if we wanted to talk more about that. I believe Commissioner Starley probably does attend the West End ones on the regular, or maybe not, I don't know, I assume. But, but it seems like there's value there. Don't know how other Commissioners feel, if that's something we should be more a part of, or if-
I know I'm regularly asked to come to the Gunflint Trail Association and always do so. They're tightly linked with the Gunflint Trail Scenic Byway Group. And so I've done that. Commissioner Starley?
Well, we have Lutz and Tofti Association. I do that, but I also do the Visit Cook County, the general one, too.
Okay.
And Commissioner Swalison is the alternate.
Correct.
They haven't been meeting a whole lot this past year, so I'll continue to do that, plus the West End, as Chairman Sullivan would do the Gunflint. So that's about the only two, really, West and Gunflint.
Well, and Jamara, the Grand Marais area, too.
Grand Marais, yeah.
And that, I guess that's where I got confused last year, because we had assigned the Visit Cook County, but that reads, meets like maybe quarterly, or is it, you know, annual? I don't even know. But, but the, the more local area tourism associations, I believe, meet more regularly, so.
Right.
So what you're saying is you, you're at the Lutz and Tofti, and Commissioner Sullivan, Madam Chair, you said you're at the-
GTA.
The Gunflint Trail.
Mm-hmm.
And Commissioner Starley, are you also at the Grand Marais Area Tourism, or just the main, the Visit Cook County one?
The Visit Cook County.
Okay. So I don't know, Commissioner Hawkins, if you would be interested in attending the Grand Marais Area Tourism Association, or I could see when that meets and, you know, try to attend, but I thought it's in, you know, our districts, so.
Have they asked us to? I'm just wondering.
No.
Give the perspective, but I just wondered, how is, can we get it quarterly through- I would think perhaps contacting Linda Jurick and asking her directly might be a good thing.
And I would, I guess where I'm going with all this is my experience at that one, that one Visit Cook County meeting was, whoa, I'm missing something here, because there's been a lot going on at the kind of satellite organizations. And so then I was like, okay, maybe that's where we should have Commissioners. And it makes sense to have different Commissioners in the different, for the different areas. So the, the general feedback I got at the Visit Cook County that it was a very welcome attendance for a Commissioner to be there, and I found it very valuable, and, and I had some, some wild ideas to share as well. So, so I may have stirred the pot a little bit, but, but I still think that it would, it would be a welcome place, but maybe we should talk to Linda.
How about if I give Linda a call, and we'll get this sorted out at a future meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm willing to serve.
Yep.
Want to know what my duty is? Why?
Exactly. All right, I will contact her. So for other Commissioners, are there any changes you'd like to make or that you're thinking about? Anything that you might want to give up because of conflicts? I noticed that because we had so many Zoom meetings a year ago, that as things have returned to in-person, sometimes there are conflicts. We weren't driving between meetings, and now that we're doing that, that is a substantial issue. So anything, any other Commissioners would like to add, delete, or change? Commissioner Hawkins?
Well, one of the committees we need to discuss is the Arrowhead Regional Corrections Board. This last year, both Commissioners Swalison and I were serving on that. This year, we don't get two votes, so we will have to decide which one of us will continue and which one will step down.
Well, and since you were the first to be assigned, and I came on later, the choice is yours.
Well, that also brings up, I, the list of responsibilities and making sure we're equitably all doing the work. And yesterday, I went through all our perdiems that we've submitted. There's a real big imbalance.
Yes.
So, and Commissioners Swalison had the least perdiems. Now, I don't know if it's just because you don't turn them in all yours, or, you know, it's hard to, hard to know exactly what gets included and what does not. So I'm certainly willing to continue, but I, I am also recognizing that, you know, if you want more work, it's there. Commissioner Mills and Commissioner Sullivan had quite a few responsibilities, a lot of responsibilities. I was in the middle. And then it was Commissioner Starley and Commissioner Swalison. So I just want to make sure that we're not, that we are all putting in as much as we can, and some people aren't taking on too much.
I agree with that, and you and I are thinking just alike when we looked at our list and looked at that imbalance. So I thank you for bringing that up, and, but Commissioner Swalison has had a few items added this morning. So what are your thoughts?
As I said, I leave that to the, the first assigned.
Okay.
I'm willing to do it, but it is certainly, you know, I don't feel my choice. I was the second, you know, person on there, and, and so it really is your choice, not a problem.
Well, actually, I really enjoy that committee, so I would keep that one. But there is another one I would be open to trading something for.
Or a bargain.
All right.
We could move down to the N-Club.
Okay.
I have enjoyed getting to know some of those Commissioners from other counties and listening to different ideas and perspectives. I'm not sure that I am the best person to advocate for Cook County on that board. I will be the first to admit it.
And where and when do they meet?
Yeah, when do they meet?
Where and when?
The first Thursday, and right now it's Zoom. There has been talk about maybe getting back in person, and I think they were in Virginia. I have never met them in person for a meeting yet. It's always been by, well, I think it's meets. It's the first Thursday of the month, and it's sometimes 9:30, sometimes 10 o'clock, mostly 10 o'clock.
Madam Chair, I'm not certain on this, but that may have been one that was north of Virginia even. It may have gone in, for some reason, I want to say I falls, but that seems ridiculous, but-
Well, it could be, because they're counties there all the way to the other side of the state.
Correct.
Yeah, that might be considered the middle spot.
Yeah.
Well, our Commissioner Swalison, is that something you would be interested in?
I don't know a lot about it, but I certainly will endure.
All right. Do you have any conflicts at that time, first Thursday at 10 o'clock?
I do this week, but other than that, I shouldn't.
Okay. Is that something that you would be happy to represent our county on?
Certainly.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Starley.
So Commissioner Swalison, on your sheet for the ARC, it says that I was the alternate, but for 2021 only.
Yeah, we had, we had two people on, and then you were the alternate.
Yes.
Would you prefer that I take the alternate on that?
Sure, since you've been already involved in it.
Okay, happy to do that.
All right.
You keeping up, April?
I'm trying.
All right. Let us know. All right. Any other Commissioners with ideas?
Just validating, Northern County, is that the Northern Counties Land Use?
Yep, correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Mills, since you are top heavy in committees, is there anything that is a challenge for you in terms of time, driving between meetings, or, or something that you feel would be better suited for another Commissioner?
Firstly, I would say I certainly maximize my, my perdiems, like for every opportunity, I record that, so they should be, and sometimes I think I even forget, so I think, I do my darndest to keep it as accurate as possible there, and airing on, yeah, all of them. Without the General Government Leadership Committee and without the Emergency Preparedness, that I would say significantly lessens my commitments. I was thinking about asking another Commissioner to take on AOA, but I, I, I'm not asking another Commissioner to do that at this point. It's, it's been very convenient to be able to do virtual meetings with them, and to my knowledge, that's going to be continuing. It is also a longer meeting, so when you do that long drive to Virginia, it makes more sense, you know, for that longer meeting, to be there in person. But at this point in time, you know, I would encourage everyone to be doing as much virtual as possible. So, so for the time being, I think, I think just those changes are going to significantly equalize my burdens. If, please, no, sorry.
I'm sorry, no, go ahead.
I was just going to say, if, if another Commissioner, though, is eyeing something I got, I'm open, I'm open to conversation.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes, I am. No, not necessarily that, but I would like to discuss the Community Center and the Extension Board. There's been a lot of transition with Diane leaving, and there's been some, I would say, maybe angst of how we may continue in the future. And I think the fact that we have a Commissioner on the Extension and then a Commissioner on the Community Center Board that are separate, and those two boards do not talk to each other, is not been a healthy place to be. So I would suggest, I think down the road, we may want to combine those two, but I don't think we're ready to do that yet. But I would suggest that maybe we have the same Commissioner on the Community Center Board as on the Extension Board to make sure that we know what's happening on both sides and can convey to that group. That's just one idea I had about how do we solve this issue of people feeling like they don't know the whole story, so.
That makes so much sense, Commissioner Hawkins. And I have heard that out in the community as well, so I really appreciate you bringing that up. Now, you are on the Extension Committee. Would you be willing to do both if that worked out for a period of time, and then if need be, we combine them? Or Commissioner Mills, what are your thoughts, having served as well?
Yeah, thank you. I'm, yeah, the representative for the Community Center Board, and, and I agree that there, I agree that we could, we could do more by bringing those two boards together. I don't know the best way to do that, and I don't know that the two boards are yet willing to do that. And so step one, I think, well, maybe this is step one, getting the same Commissioner on both of them. But I also think getting those boards just in the same room, or in the same virtual room, or whatever, having that conversation would be really helpful.
One of those is a statutory committee, and the other is not. And I don't know if that poses any particular challenges.
I don't know that either. Certainly important to be aware of, but I don't know, I don't know that it would hinder the operation of, of one. Yeah, I'm sorry, I hadn't, I hadn't, we had, we had talked a little bit about this, and I hadn't, I hadn't given it further thought. And, and I think I would be, I think I would be comfortable there. Well, first I have to look up to make sure it fits with your schedule. If that's kind of the direction you're thinking, of taking that one on?
I was willing to take that on, is what I was saying.
It makes a lot of sense for one person to do that and be gathering information from both groups and communicating between groups.
Yes.
Madam Chair, with the Extension, we have a lot of things to work out. I'm also on the Extension Board. So if they combined, then Dave, that wouldn't work, there'd be three of us.
Ah.
So I think, you know, between the two of us-
Correct.
-we would need to work out something. If that's the direction that the university wants to go, that's the thing that we have to work out. But they need to understand the groundwork that we have here, too, in at least knowing what's going on. I don't know in the future if we need to always meet with the Extension Community Board, but at least have a level playing field as to what's going on in the beginning. So we're meeting, we'll be meeting now in a couple weeks with that. So I just think we need more discussion-
Yeah.
-at the Extension level. Yeah, it's a lot to grind through.
Madam Chair, so the Community Center Board has been meeting the third Wednesday at 4:30 PM, and that looks like-
Is that the HRA meeting at the same time?
Yeah.
I believe that we are Thursday.
Wednesday at 3?
Yeah.
And that probably goes longer than an hour and a half, I'd imagine, eh?
Well, we've been, no, we've been trying to get out of there by 4:30.
I think that would work.
So it's just from leaving here to get to wherever, if they're meeting in person.
No, not, not, not lately. And it has, I think we have had some, James has been attending as well through the transition period, and there has been a little bit of shifting of dates around, but, and I think that the, the board would be open to shifting of dates. So there's just, you know, in times of transition, it's, it can be sensitive, and, and so hearing the Extension side of things, it sounds like there's some sensitivity there as well, and that's the statutory- that's the statutory, the statutory requirement there. And it's, are we statutorily required to have two Commissioners?
Yes, by the state.
Well, there we go.
Yep.
Okay. Well, this seems to make a whole lot of sense in my, in my mind, so I would be very happy to pass the torch over to.
Thank you.
All right.
Great.
Thank you so much. While we're digging through this, do we have any other changes that might be helpful to our board?
Madam Chair, there's just one time change, or date change, rather, for the Library Board. I, I just want to make sure it's on the record that we're, we're meeting the fourth Thursday of every month at 5:00 PM.
Fourth Thursday at 5:00. All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Anything else with committee assignments?
Not for me. I'm on the receiving end today.
And Madam, Madam Chair, I really do appreciate your efforts and everyone's efforts to, to equalizing things out. This is going to, I think, well, I think it'll be very helpful for, for me, and, and I think it'll be helpful for the board as a whole.
Absolutely. Commissioner Storley.
Madam Chair, as I was sitting here thinking about something else, terms, so Commissioner Swalson, your term limit is until when?
I will be, mine ends at the end of this next year.
Okay, in '22?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or this year, yep.
Yeah, because we were off a little bit because of, yeah.
Correct. Yeah, I'm just completing it. It's correct.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, okay.
And also hours.
Correct. That's right.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hawkins.
I actually, I'm okay with all this now, but in my looking over, trying to make sure that we're equitable in our, in our board assignments, and then thinking about our, maybe discussion later about salaries and making sure that is right, I would like to make a suggestion, because in my analysis of the per diems, it was kind of difficult, because I know that, like, on many days, you have three meetings and you get one per diem, and on your per diem list, it only says one meeting. So, it's hard to know if we're out, out of balance because your Wednesdays are really full or not. So, I would, because I like data, I like to analyze data, I would like to suggest that all of us Commissioners list on the one day that you're claiming your per diem, all the meetings you attend on the same line, but you're only going to claim for one, but so we have record of how many times have been meeting there to also make sure that it's distributed fairly.
I think that's an excellent suggestion.
Madam Chair. So, so the suggestion is to have all the meetings on one line, and, and then the idea is that we'll go, we'll be able to go through those sheets and tally the total number of meetings, even though just the one line is.
To know how many meetings you have attended in the last year, because right now, we don't have that information.
Madam Chair, I, I do think that's a good idea. I would note that all meetings are not equal. For example, if you go to a four-hour meeting in Virginia, your whole day is gone, and that's one meeting, where if you have three one-hour meetings in Grand Marais, you've had three hours of meetings. So, I, I think that needs to be taken into account as well.
That's a very good point, and perhaps, you know, in addition to, to listing those, as Commissioner Hawkins suggested, it would be valuable for this group to just talk about and share information about our schedules and, and what we're doing, making sure on ICAL, we're entering meetings that we have that may not be part of what's happening here at the courthouse, but just so people see when those meetings are. I think that would be very valuable as well, and, and in alignment, Commissioner Hawkins, with what you said about, you know, looking at, at salaries and compensation and that type of thing, I would also encourage Commissioners to consider keeping really good records of the amount of time that you spend not only at meetings, but in preparation, so that we can look at compensation and make sure that we're kind of in the ballpark, and that we're certainly giving opportunities in the future to have anybody be on this board, that it is something that people can do for a job and earn a living.
Madam Chair, I, I, I also like the suggestion, I, it's, it's better than not listing them all, but as Administrator Yorkey, it's not going to give as accurate a picture. I don't know how, it's, it's more useful than not having that, but I don't know that it's going to be useful enough to help us get that broad picture. So, I really think we should have a, a better system for tracking for Commissioners, probably a different system for tracking than, than the current expense sheet, and so I don't want to make it any more difficult for, for staff by any means, but I'm just trying to think of how we can, how we can better track that.
I thought that yesterday, I thought, oh, I probably should sit down with April and discuss with her before I mention it today, but sorry, that didn't happen.
No, Commissioner, that's one, it's actually something I have brought up with Administrator Yorkey a couple weeks ago after the discussion about tracking for salary and stuff, and it's, it's definitely doable to create an Excel spreadsheet for each Commissioner, where you could simply just plug in the, the time, the date, and what meeting it was, and we can either attach that, I'd have to work with Brady, we can either attach that to the expense report, or we can just house that in the Administrator's office.
I made a simple spreadsheet yesterday, and I was doing the same thing, so maybe we can work together, April, to come up with something and share that at maybe our Committee of the Whole meeting later this month, and come up with a common way to track what we do and keep good records. Commissioner Swalson?
Madam Chair, I think that's a much better idea. I was hesitant to try to put all of that information on the, you know, expense sheet. It just, I like the clean process that we have right now, and when it, when it coming to specifically the paying of per diem and everything else, I don't want there to be confusion on any part of that. So, if we could put the things you're asking for per diem, or mileage, or that type of thing on that form, and then set up this, this other spreadsheet, I'm happy to add the information. I just want it to be a clean thing for anyone, particularly anything that's auditable for any expenses that are going forward. So, the separate vehicle is, I'm, I'm all for that, that, you know, that as a tracking more than anything else vehicle.
And then in terms of monitoring time spent on meetings, I assume we'd be including travel time for things that are in Duluth or whatever.
Correct.
Well, for.
Well, we'll, we'll work together to come up with something and share that at a Committee of the Whole meeting in the future.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, so to, to be clear, are we staying the course for the current expense sheet, or are we, are we all adding, or what's?
We're going to stay the course for the current spreadsheet that we do for per diems, and then April will work with us to develop a new tool to keep track of everything that we do.
Do you still want that on the COW agenda for this month?
I think it would be appropriate to have there. Commissioner Storley.
Okay, yes, I agree. Let's just keep our per diem sheet clean with what we do, and then do extra. I just have a comment, and perhaps maybe a decision on NACO. Their meeting, their national meeting is coming up the week of February 12th. Right now, I'm not real keen on flying out to Washington DC. However, if I can work with April, when we get the notice that the registration is now starting, I would like to find out if they're doing Zoom like they did last year with their Health Committee, and if they are, I'm perfectly happy to stay home and be a part of that. So, let's, I'll just work with April on that. If that's not possible, then we'd have to see, you know, what the climate is with the, with the virus, and so on and so forth, so I guess I'll wait a few weeks before I would ask you for a vote to send me out there, because that is important, I think.
Thank you so much for bringing that up.
Yeah, right now, we'll be in a holding pattern. Has all the people trying to get home from having Christmas vacation work. I think things will be worked out by then, but.
We hope.
Thank you.
Anything else with boards, committee assignments? Good work. I'm pleased with our ability to analyze what we're doing and make good changes, productive changes. Looking at our, let's move down to the Board Manager Report. One of the things, and I'm sure other Commissioners as well, may have noticed when we looked through here, is that a lot of our terms have expired, and I'm not certain of the accuracy of this. I'm going to jump to the Airport Advisory Committee just as an example, but I think each of us, as we go to our prospective groups, our respective groups, need to check on terms. Under the Airport Advisory Commission, everyone has the same expiration, which I know is not accurate. I talked to Stan Toll, who is not even listed on here, and he's been with them 11 years, and he's not on the list, and so I'm not sure how these dates came to be, but I, for example, when I go to my next Airport Advisory Commission, will make sure to get that information and get it back here to the county, but there are other examples here in this list where terms have expired, and I would just ask that each one of us do a little work with our groups, collect the accurate information, and bring it back to the county so we can have accurate lists.
That'd be really helpful. Thank you.
Any, any other comments or suggestions regarding the Board Manager Report and all of those lists? So, we'll have to come back and approve that at a later date, but if there's no further discussion, we could entertain a motion to approve the Commissioner assignments for 2022.
Madam Chair, could I make a request? Could we, could we go through the full list and just confirm that April and I have the correct information?
Absolutely.
I think that'd be really, really good to do. And so, I've taken notes, I'm going, I'm going to just start with, with the, with the full list and just go through it. So, Active Living Steering Committee, we have listed as the primary Commissioner Swalson and the secondary Commissioner Mills. Commissioner Swalson's term ends December 2025, and Commissioner Mills' term ends December 22.
And actually, mine ends in '22.
Ends in '22.
Yep.
Good to know. Thank you. Okay. Airport Advisory Commission, so Madam Chair, you mentioned that we need to add Stan Toll.
Toll, correct.
And then we have you listed as the member, Madam Chair, and Commissioner Hawkins as the alternate.
Correct.
Both terms ending in December 24. AMC Indian Affairs Task Force, we've got Commissioner Swalson as the member, Commissioner Sullivan as the alternate, both, and Commissioner Swalson's term ending December 22, Commissioner Sullivan's term ending December 24.
Correct.
Okay. EMC Policy Committee, you're all on that, of course, so we'll just go ahead. AIS, we mentioned that Commissioner Swalson. Oh. Good catch.
Yeah.
Well, I was tying into the 2025.
25.
But, oh. Because that's 2022.
Right, they're all 2022.
Okay. Thank you. We'll make that correction.
And I don't know if it's vacant, if that's, it's another, we have another staff voting number?
You know, I, I will follow up on that, because we, we had, I believe we had.
It used to be Tim Nelson.
Tim Nelson, right. Okay. So, all of these would end the 22.
Correct.
I'm, I'm sorry, no, just, just Commissioner Swalson's, because Commissioner Swalson, Commissioner Storley, and, and myself's terms end in 2022?
Right, but don't we, don't we reappoint folks? Oh, well, it just goes with the seat, so.
Correct.
So, Commissioner Sullivan's will stay.
Understood, understood. Okay, very good.
Sorry.
No, that's, that's good. Okay, so on Aquatic Invasive Species, I understand that Commissioner Swalson's going to be the primary, and then Commissioner Storley is going to be the alternate. Okay. ARDC Regional Transportation Advisory Committee, we've got Commissioner Swalson as the member, term ending December 25.
22.
22?
Everyone, everyone of mine, 22.
Okay. Arrowhead Coalition for Multiple Use, we've got Commissioner Swalson as the member, and Commissioner Mills as the alternate. Arrowhead Counties Association, we have Commissioner Storley as the member, Commissioner Hawkins as the alternate, Commissioner Storley's term ending December 22, Commissioner Hawkins' term ending December 24. Arrowhead Economic Opportunity Agency, we've got Commissioner Mills as the member, term ending December 22, and Commissioner Storley as the alternate, term ending December 22. Arrowhead Health Alliance, we've got Commissioner Mills as the member, term ending December 22, and Commissioner Storley as the alternate, term ending December 22. Okay, and we, now, on the Arrowhead Library System Governing Board, there are no Commissioners. Do we need to take action on that appointment? It's Helen Muth.
Commissioner Mills, I thought you were.
I'm on, I'm on the Grand Marais.
Grand Marais Library.
Library Board.
Okay.
And I'm not, I, I cannot recall if there are Commissioners from other counties that sit on the Arrowhead Library System Governing Board. I feel that Cook County is well represented by Helen Muth on that board, but it may, I don't know for how long she's intending to do that. It may behoove us to have a Commissioner on that board, because there are some significant decisions made at that level versus at our local level. I mean, of course, there's significant decisions made there too, but it's almost, it's not analogous, but I was going to say, it's almost analogous to the Duluth area YMCA versus our local Area Y Council, but it's not the same, because it is a governing board, our local library is a governing board, so, but I don't know any more information on when, when they meet, so I'll be happy to talk to Helen more about that.
That would be great if you could find that information out. Thank you so much. Then we have the Arrowhead Regional Corrections Board.
Mm-hmm. We've got Commissioner Hawkins and Commissioner Swalson listed as the members, Hawkins' term ending '24, Swalson's term ending '21, oh, '21.
Thank you.
And did we?
That's, yeah, that should be '22. And is Commissioner Swalson going to be?
Question on that one, I, I think that was because 2021 Commissioner Swalson was just going to. I think that was because 2021 Commissioner Swalson was just going to cover that, but we just made changes. So is it going to be Commissioner Hawkins, you were taking off that, correct?
No, I'm going to be the primary.
She's the primary.
She's the primary.
I'm the alternate.
You're going to be the alternate.
Okay.
And Commissioner Storey will be removed from that.
Correct.
Great. ARDC, we've got Commissioner Storey listed as the member, term expiring December 22, and Commissioner Hawkins as the alternate, term extend, sorry, term expiring December Arrowhead Transit, we have Commissioner Storey as the member, term ending December 22, Commissioner Mills as the alternate, term ending December 22. Benefits and Wellness Committee, Commissioner Mills is the member, term expiring December On the Board of Adjustment, we have Commissioners, Commissioner Storey as, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sullivan as the primary ex officio member, term ending December 24, and Commissioner Storey as the second ex officio member, December 22. Budget Advisory Committee, we have Commissioner Hawkins as the member, term expiring December 24, and we have Commissioner, okay, we don't have, are these, these are two, two members. We don't have an alternate, correct?
Right, just two members.
Okay, so Commissioner Sullivan is the other member, term expiring December 24. On the Building Committee, we have Commissioner Mills as the member, term expiring December 22nd, 22nd, 22. Commissioner Hawkins as the alternate, term expiring December 24. On the Census Redistricting Committee, we have Commissioner Hawkins as a member, term expiring December 24, Commissioner Mills as the second member, term expiring December 22nd. Keep saying 22nd, 22.
We know what you mean, though.
Well, yeah. It's a long list, folks.
It is.
Okay, and then the alternate is Commissioner Storey, whose term expires December 22. All right. Children's Justice Initiative, State Supreme Court, Commissioner Mills is the member there, term expiring December 22. Committee of the Whole, of course, includes everyone. Armor, armor is misspelled there.
So this is the one that switched to Commissioner Swalson?
Right, so Commissioner Swalson is the, the primary.
That's correct.
And that, so, and that's December 22. And then we have Commissioner Storey as the alternate, term expiring December 24. Do we want to vote on the Community Center Board of Trustees? Or are we going to, I know there was discussion about potentially bringing those committees together. Do we want to go ahead and just vote on the membership as it is and make adjustments in the future if needed? Seems like that's probably the best way to do it.
I think that's probably a good way to go about it.
Okay, so Community Center Board of Trustees, we have, let's see, let me look at the full list here. So we have Commissioner Mills as the ex officio member, term ending December 22, and then Commissioner Storey as the alternate, term ending December 24.
But I was going to take over Commissioner Mills.
Oh, okay. Okay, great.
And then the term would end for Commissioner Hawkins on December of 2024.
Okay. Thanks for that correction there. Community Health Board, we've got Commissioner Mills as a member, term ending December 22, and we've got Commissioner Storey as the alternate, term ending December 22.
Madam Chair, thank you. Just FYI, James and April, Frankie, Frankie Jarko is not currently a member, so there's currently a vacancy, and hopefully we'll address that today at our PHHS Advisory Council.
Yep. Thanks for that catch. Board of Commissioners, I think you're all on that. The County Chamber of Commerce, we've got Commissioner Swalson as the member, term expiring January 22.
22.
Oh, thank you. And just a note that we're going to correct Commissioner Swalson's term ending on the Board of Commissioners to December 22. All right. Cook County Community Wildfire Protection Plan Implementation Committee, fully vacant.
If I remember correctly, we left it on the list last year, but we weren't sure if that was one that needed to be continued to attend. We left it on here to revisit, but it can be taken off if, if that means not.
I don't believe there have been any meetings of that group. I've heard nothing about it. Other commissioners? So let's take it off.
All right.
Sounds much like Firewise.
Yeah.
Great.
It could have been pre-Firewise or something.
All right, moving on to Cook County Healthcare Planning Committee, we have Commissioner Storey listed as the member, term ending December 22, Commissioner Mills as the alternate, term ending December 22. Cook County Historical Society, we have Commissioner Sullivan as the member, term ending December 24, Commissioner Mills as the alternate, term ending December 22. Cook County Invasives Team, and this is different from Aquatic Invasives. We have Commissioner Storey listed as the member, term ending December 22, Commissioner Sullivan as the alternate, term ending December 24. CCLP, we have Commissioner Sullivan as the member, term ending December 24, Commissioner Mills as the alternate, term ending December 22. Cook County Restorative Justice Committee, we have Commissioner Hawkins as the member, term ending December 24, Commissioner Mills as the alternate, term ending December 22. Cook County Wetlands Management Plan, we have Commissioner Sullivan as the member, term ending December 24, Commissioner Mills, alternate, December 22. Cook County YMCA Advisory Committee, Commissioner Mills as the member, term ending December 22, Commissioner Hawkins as the alternate, term ending December 24. Counsel on Aging, Commissioner Sullivan is the member, term ending December 24, and Commissioner Swalson, term is the alternate, and his term needs to be corrected to end on the 22. Okay, Cook County Board of Appeals and Equalization, we have two members, Commissioner Storey, term ending December 22, and Commissioner Mills, term ending December 22. Oh, okay, never mind.
All of us.
That's, that's one of those that I don't need to, we just need to make sure we have the, the term ending dates correct.
And we do.
Which in this case we do, so we'll move on. County DNR Forest Service Quarterly Coordination, we have Commissioner Sullivan as the member, term ending December 24, Commissioner Storey as the alternate, term ending December 22. Cook County Grand Marais Economic Development Authority, we have Commissioner Sullivan as the member, term ending December 24, Commissioner Hawkins as the alternate, term ending December EOC, everybody is part of that, of course. Emergency Preparedness Committee, we have Commissioner Mills as a member, term ending December 22, Commissioner Sullivan as the second member, term ending December 24, and Commissioner Storey as the alternate, term ending December 22. Is that one of the ones we changed?
That's one that we changed, and that would be, Commissioner Swalson would be member one. Excuse me, member two.
Yeah, I'll be number two, Commissioner Sullivan, number one.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, Firewise, we talked about Commissioner Sullivan becoming the primary and Commissioner Swalson becoming the alternate on that. Got that correct? Okay. Moving on to General Government Leadership Committee, obviously this goes to the chair and the vice chair, so Commissioner Sullivan and Swalson will be those members. Getchagami Trail Association, we've got Commissioner Storey as the member, term ending December 22, Commissioner Mills as the alternate, term ending December 22. Grand Marais Library Board, we talked about briefly, Commissioner Mills is the member there and his term ends December 22. Grand Portage Community Task Force, we have, this is split across pages, so I've got Commissioner Swalson as the member, term ending December 22, and we've got Commissioner Sullivan as the alternate, term ending December 24. Gunflint Trail Scenic Byway Committee, Commissioner Sullivan is the member there, term ending December 24. Highway Advisory Committee meeting, we have Commissioner Hawkins as the primary, term ending.
That should be 2024.
Okay, and then we have, do we not have an alternate? Am I missing something here?
We do not have an alternate for that meeting.
Do we need one?
I thought, I thought you were my alternate.
For?
Highway Advisory.
Yeah, we actually had the discussion last year.
Yeah, we did.
So Commissioner Swalson is the alternate.
That's what I had thought, anyway.
That's what I thought. Two of us can't be wrong.
Okay, I'm glad we're going through these. Hospital District, we have Commissioner Mills as the member, term expiring December 22, Commissioner Storey as the alternate, term expiring December 22. HRA, we already talked about this, Commissioner Hawkins is the member, term expiring December 24, and Commissioner Sullivan is the alternate, and this says member, so we just need to.
Change it to alternate.
Change it to alternate, term ending December 24. Labor Negotiations, we've got Commissioners Mills and Swalson, both term ending December One Watershed, One Plan, we've got Commissioner Sullivan as the member, term expiring December 24. Lake Superior Poplar River Water District Board of Directors, we've got Commissioner Storey as the member, and that term expires December 22. And neither, neither One Watershed, One Plan nor the Lake Superior Poplar River District have, has an alternate. Is that something that we want to address?
I think it would make a lot of sense to have an alternate. These are really important groups and lots of controversial discussions, and I think it's very important that we do have an alternate on each. I'd like to recommend that Commissioner Storey, you and I be alternates for one another since we have that background knowledge and experience. I think we'd be able to step in for one another. What are your thoughts?
We haven't met in over a year since we already have, you know, discussed the Poplar River and the decommissioning, but it could, you know, it's okay to have an alternate. Okay, so.
What do other commissioners think of that?
No, I think it's a, it's a good way to, to cover it. We'll just have to watch and see if it doesn't meet.
Right.
If the one doesn't meet again for another year, then it'll be a good discussion item for next year to say, do we need to continue to?
Yeah. And we do have a group, Elena Hansel will be coming forward to present discontinuing a group that's no longer active, so that usually comes from soil and water.
Okay, so the recommendation is to have Commissioner Storey be the alternate for One Watershed, One Plan.
Correct.
Her term would expire December 22, and then Commissioner Sullivan would be the alternate for the following committee, term ending December 24. Okay. Land Policy Advisory Group, we have Commissioner Sullivan as the member, term expiring December 24, and there is no alternate there. Any desire for an alternate?
Have you met?
We have not. We're going to be having some training coming up. I think it would be wise to have an alternate. We do for other positions, so I don't see why not. Is there somebody who would be interested in serving as an alternate?
I would.
All right. How do other commissioners feel if Commissioner Hawkins serves as that alternate? All right, very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Hawkins will be listed as the alternate for the Land Policy Advisory Group, term expiring December 24. Law Library Board, we've got Commissioner Storey as the member, term expiring December 22, and is there any, that's another dormant group, is it not? The Law Library Board?
Oh, it's, it's pending another meeting. It's just requires some action on my part, so we will be having a meeting in the next six months, I guess.
Okay.
Attorney Hickon, do you feel there should be an alternate for that position?
I would request an alternate. We normally meet one time a year, so it wouldn't be a great burden, but since it's a board that, you know, has half a dozen members, if scheduling is a problem for the primary, then we would want the alternate available.
Is there someone that would be interested?
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalson.
And Molly, you mentioned half a dozen members. We don't have those listed in this list, so.
I'll send them to you.
Okay.
And April.
Okay. Local Water Man, excuse me, Local Water Management Plan Advisory Committee, we have Commissioner Sullivan listed as the member, term expiring December 24, Commissioner Mills, alternate, December 22.
And this is the committee that Elena Hansel will be coming forward to us later this month to disband?
Okay.
So you can soon hit delete.
All right, NCIT, we have Commissioner Storey listed as the member, term ending December 22, Commissioner Mills as the alternate, term ending December 22. Minnesota Power Citizen Advisory Committee, Commissioner Storey's the member with her term expiring December 22, and we do not have an alternate listed there.
It meets about every two to three years.
Anyone interested in serving as an alternate?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that if that's, if we think we need an alternate.
All right. Minnesota Transportation Alliance, we have Commissioner. Minnesota Transportation Alliance, we have Commissioner Swalson as the member. We need to correct the term end date on that to 22. And there is no alternate listed.
And no meetings were conducted this year, this past year. So I, I couldn't tell you if we need an alternate or not.
If one is needed, call one of us.
Absolutely will.
Okay. All right. Moving on, National Association of Counties, we've got Commissioner Storey as the member, term ending December 22. There's no alternate here.
No, because that's an appointment from AMC, from Julie.
Okay. Gotcha, gotcha. It's interesting they don't have alternates, though.
Yeah.
Seems like there would be. But, okay.
I'll check it out.
Okay. Northeast Minnesota Area Transportation Partnership, we have Commissioner Swalson as the member, term ending December 22. We'll make that correction. Commissioner Hawkins as the alternate, term ending December 24. Northeast Minnesota Emergency Communications Board, we've got Commissioner Sullivan as a member.
So this is one that we changed, and this would be Commissioner Swalson?
That's right. I did make that note. I just didn't put it on this list. Great. And then we'll change the term ending date to 22. Okay, so we did that already. Moving on to Northeast Minnesota Home Consortium Advisory Committee, Commissioner Storey is the member, term ending December 22. Commissioner Mills, alternate, term ending December 22. Northeast Minnesota Office of Job Training Program, we've got Commissioner Mills as the member. Commissioner Storey's the alternate, both term ending December 22. North Shore Collaborative, Commissioner Mills is the member, term ending December 22. And Commissioner Sullivan is the alternate, term ending December 24. North Shore Management Board, Commissioner Swalson is the member, term ending December 22. Make that correction. Commissioner Storey is the alternate, term ending December 22. That needs to be corrected as well. North Shore Scenic Drive Council, we've got Commissioner Storey as the member. And Commissioner Swalson as the alternate, and we'll correct both those term ending dates. Northeast Waste Advisory Council, we've got Commissioner Mills as the member, and Commissioner Storey as the alternate, both ending December 22, 22, sorry. N Club, we talked about. We are putting Commissioner Swalson as the member for that.
Correct.
So that is term ending December 22. And then Commissioner Mills is staying as the alternate. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Term ending December 22. All right. Do we need a break?
No.
Okay.
Need a break?
Just asking.
Tim Nelson isn't in the room.
That's right. Tim, get in here. All right. Northwoods Food Project, we've got Commissioner Mills as the member, term ending December 22. Commissioner Sullivan is the alternate, term ending December 24. Parks and Trails Commission, Tim Nelson was in my office yesterday. Tim Kennedy is actually no longer going to serve on that board, so he, and, and I understand, let's see, we have brought on-
Chad Benish.
Chad Benish has been brought on, and then also-
Anton Moody, I believe.
Anton. All right. So here we have Commissioner Mills as the ex officio member, December 22, term end. And we have Commissioner Hawkins as the alternate, term ending December 24. Okay. Passion Pit Committee, Old Shore Road Beach Committee, whatever you would like to call it. We have Commissioner Sullivan as the member and capable chair, term ending, we have, oh, well, this, this is just a time-limited committee, so all the terms end April of 22. And do we have any, just for my curiosity, do we have any expectation that the work of this group would extend beyond April of this year?
We do not. We're, we're hopeful that we will hear in the very near future about the disposition of the property from Mendat to Grand Portage.
Okay. Very good. So, okay. Personnel Committee, we have Commissioner Mills as one of the members, term ending December 22. And Commissioner Sullivan is the second member, term ending December 20, it says 22.
Four.
Should it be 24? All right. Public Health and Human Services Advisory Council, we have, let's see, what do we have? We have Commissioner Mills as the ex officio, term ending December 22. And we have... Do not have an alternate. I don't see another board member listed.
I have attended as an alternate.
Have you?
Once. It's like the only alternate we've done all year.
Would the board like to formally-
I think that's why it's-
Approve Commissioner Sullivan as the alternate?
Sure.
Term ending December 24. Okay. PHHS Local Mental Health Advisory Council, we have Commissioner Mills listed as a member. And here's, we do not have-
I'm listed as the alternate on the next page. I did notice that our former HR Director Pamela Dixon is listed there, so that should be changed.
She, she, I don't know that she attended last time, but the time before, she still does participate.
Okay. I didn't know with her new position if she'd be doing that.
Oh, you're right.
My understanding, Sarah Hadley, is she's the vice chair now.
Okay.
Okay, so just re, because I kind of lost my bearings there for a second. So we have, for Public Health, Human Services, Local Mental Health Advisory Council, we do have Commissioner Mills as the member, Commissioner Sullivan as the alternate, Mills expiring December 22, and Sullivan expiring December 24. Pigeon River International Emergency Management Committee, we have Commissioner Swalson listed as the member. We will correct the term ending date to December 22. Planning Commission, we have Commissioner Sullivan listed as the ex officio member, term ending December 24. And Commissioner Storey as the alternate, term ending December 22. Poplar River Watershed and Management Board, which sounds an awful lot like a previous committee, but-
Correct.
It is.
Correct.
It is. Okay. All right. Public Health and Human Services Board, obviously, y'all are on that, so we can skip over that. Public Safety and Transportation Committee, we have Commissioner Hawkins listed as the member, term expiring December 24. Oh, did we change that one?
Where's this date here?
Oh, thank you. Okay, we will make a correction. Are all the others correct? That's right, that's right.
Commissioner Swalson's needs-
Yeah, yeah. That was Commissioner Mills' catch there.
Okay.
So, thank you. Okay. Public Safety and Transportation Committee, Commissioner Hawkins, the member, term expiring December 24. Commissioner Swalson, second member, term expiring December 22. Make that correction. Rainy River Headwaters, Vermillion, One Watershed, One Plan. We have Commissioner Sullivan listed as the member, term expiring, and that should actually be December 24.
Four, correct.
And then Commissioner Mills as the alternate, term expiring December 22. Soil and Water Conservation District Board, we have Commissioners, Commissioner Sullivan listed as ex officio, term ending December 24. That needs to be corrected. And then Commissioner Mills, alternate, term ending December 22. Revolving Loan Fund, we have Commissioner Hawkins as a member, term expiring December 24. And Commissioner Sullivan as the alternate, term expiring December 24. Safety and Security Committee, Commissioner Sullivan is the member, term expiring December 24. Commissioner Mills, the alternate, term expiring December 22. Sawtooth Bluffs Recreation Planning Committee, we have two members, Commissioner Hawkins, term expiring December 24, and Commissioner Mills, term expiring December 22. Septic Appeals Panel, Commissioner Sullivan is the member there, term expiring December 24. We'll make that correction.
Thank you.
Slash disposal, disposal committee, Commissioner Sullivan is the member, term expiring December 24. Commissioner Mills, alternate, term expiring December 22. Solid Waste Committee, Commissioners Mills and Hawkins are the members, Mills expiring December 22, Hawkins expiring December 24. Townships, do we, do we need a different name for that?
Well, we could add Lutzen, Schroder, and Tofti.
I request an alternate.
Okay. We'll get your alternate. Okay.
I think we're also rotating into this, you know. Well, you could put Lutzen, Tofti, and Schroder, because that's the specific ones, but-
I guess so.
Just Townships is fine, too.
Okay. All right, that's fine. I'm overthinking it, aren't I? I do that sometimes.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't.
Okay.
I heard a rumor of Holvan incorporating, is that, that was a joke.
Oh, no.
That's how the rumors started.
Not anymore. You said it out loud in a public meeting.
Oh, boy. There we go.
See it in the news tomorrow.
All right. Moving right along. We have UVM Extension Committee, we have two members, Commissioners, Commissioner Storey, term ending December 22, that needs to be corrected. Commissioner Hawkins, term ending December 24. Vacation Rental Appeals Panel, we have Commissioner Swalson on that committee, and we'll correct his term ending date to December 22. And then we did have discussion about Visico County, and Madam Chair will call Linda Jurek to, to discuss that before-
Correct.
Any action is taken. So that is the list.
Wow, that's pretty amazing. And we thought this would be a short meeting.
Yeah.
But I think we're doing things right, and so we have gone through a lot of information.
And I just want to say I appreciate the opportunity to make sure that April, I have everything straight, so we can-
Absolutely.
Get that corrected.
It's important. Well, we'll collect that information on term limits and such for you for next round. But in the meantime, is there a motion to approve the assignments for the year 2022? Commissioner Swalson?
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the committee assignments as noted and amended.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalson. Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll support.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Any further discussion? Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah, I'm sorry that I didn't think of this earlier, but going through that list, the Northeast Minnesota Home Consortium, I'm really not clear what that is exactly, and I know Commissioner Storey is on that. And I just think now that with our HRA formation, that I just want to make sure that we're communicating if there's anything that you learn in that group that we're communicating with the HRA, because that would be very important. So I just want to make that- We, we meet twice a year. So last year, we had no idea what's going on here, but now when I attend in the spring, I will tell them. Okay, yeah, so I think if you want to just keep me in the loop on that one, I think that would be beneficial.
Would, Madam Chair, Commissioner Hawkins, would you prefer to be alternate on that? I'm, I'm currently the alternate. I have not attended. I do get the emails, and that might be valuable.
Oh, I would like to get the emails, then.
Yeah, I think that would be valuable.
I would be willing to do that, I think, if it's-
Well, like I said, I never, never had to attend, but, but yeah, I think keeping you in the loop with HRA and as alternate would be pretty valuable.
Well, if you're willing, yeah, I would be willing to-
That's great.
Accept that.
So the amendment is to make Commissioner Sullivan the alternate for the Northeast Minnesota-
Commissioner Hawkins.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
Commissioner Sullivan.
My apologies. Commissioner Hawkins, the alternate for the Northeast Minnesota Home Consortium Advisory Committee, term ending December 24.
And so I'd like to go back to the motion, and would you like to amend your motion to include that?
I would, I believe I did, as amended.
As amended, all right.
But there was an amendment to the amendment.
The amendment.
With all amendments included.
And Commissioner Mills, your second?
Yes, please.
Quickly, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. All right. So now, we're going to move on to our Auditor Treasurer, Item 7, Designation of County Primary Depository.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So annually, we designate a primary depository. The Auditor's Office has the authority from the board to name other deposit, but this is our main depository, our checking account. And so I'd ask you to approve or to acknowledge Grand Murray State Bank, approve as our primary depository for funds. It says 2021, but it's for 2022.
2022.
And hopefully, it says that in the, it does say that in the resolution, so.
Thank you so much. All right.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to approve Grand Murray State Bank as the primary depository for 2022.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mills. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. The resolution has been given a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. So now we move on to our budget resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is what you approved on the 21st. It just puts it into a resolution form, and you can see the, any changes that were discussed at the meeting should all be included here, so.
I'd like to thank everybody for that lengthy and very, very thorough discussion that we had. I just think it's another example of how well as a team we work together. I want to thank everybody for that. So is there a motion to approve the budget resolution?
Madam Chair, I would, motion to approve the 2022 Cook County budget and levy by resolution.
Thank you, Commissioners Swalson. Is there a second?
Storey's support.
Thank you, Commissioner Storey. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, there's just one correction in the summary there, it's again 2021.
Okay, so change that to 2022.
Thank you.
It's just like my checkbook. I keep putting 21.
After 22, it says 21.
All right. With that change, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. On to our approval of newspaper for legal publications.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we had, again, one bid received. Thank you, Madam Chair. So we had, again, one bid received from Cook County News-Herald. And the rates, as you can see, are the same as the previous year, $9 per column inch. And attached here also is their proof of their status as a legal newspaper for publication. So I would ask for approval of Cook County News-Herald as our legal publication for 2022.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Cook County News-Herald as our legal publication for 2022.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mills, is there a second?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. So I have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And on down to our resolution for non-county levies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is just acknowledging the levies that we collect for other taxing entities, and that we will spread on the tax rolls and collect and pay out to those entities for 2022, I hope, it says.
It does.
Okay, good.
All right. So we can see that we have listed there our levies for the City of Grand Murray, Schroder, Tofti, Lutzen, our fire levies, special taxing districts, and ISD 166. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the spread and collection of 2022 non-county levies.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there a second?
Swalson supports.
Thank you, Commissioners Swalson. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, Administrator Yorki.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a lot this week, but I did want to note that we are expecting a ruling from the Supreme Court on January 7th regarding the OSHA temporary, emergency temporary standard on COVID vaccination and testing. And that will determine how we move forward with the, or whether we move forward with the implementation of the policy that you all approved on December 21st. So eagerly awaiting that, and we'll have more information, of course, next week.
All right, thank you very much. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we did it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, April and James and Elena, for all your work as-